Fourth, 2014. I'd like to call the regular council meeting of the city of Twinsburg to order. Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mrs. Stauffer? Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Okay. Next, we'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Ted Yates. Everybody rise, please.
Father, we just want to thank you for this opportunity we have to serve the city of Twinsburg. We ask that you just help guide this meeting, help guide us, so that we can make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community, so that we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we have the approval of the minutes from the June 10th, 2014 council meeting. Anybody have any changes or corrections?
I do not.
Okay. Hearing none, meetings stand as written. Next, we have awards and presentations, and we have for the Joshua McTarian Scholarship Fund, I mean, an award would be Chuck Clapper, and he's president of the scholarship fund. So Chuck, if you want to come up and make your presentation? Yeah, you want to use the mic, please?
All right. He's going.
Or you got a mic there? Okay.
Chuck, two, three. Yes, I'm the president of the Joshua McTarian Memorial Scholarship. Our original... I think everybody can probably hear me, anyway. I can talk really loud.
Yeah, but for TV, we need to be in the mic.
Our original winner rescinded the scholarship, and so we wanted to make a public presentation to the runner-up who still wanted to take it. And her name is Alani, right?
Alani.
Alani?
Alani.
Alani, sorry. Menace. And she's going to the Ohio State University to pursue a degree in criminal justice. She had a 4.13 GPA.
Yeah.
Give or take a point something. She also won the Mayor's Scholarship.
I did.
Correct, yes. So, we just wanted to say, on behalf of the scholarship, congratulations. And, uh...
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have the Summit County Kids Month, and we have Amy McLaughlin here, who is the Director of Child Care Connection, and this is for the Fifth Annual Summit for Kids Professional Day Symposium, which is Friday, August 1st, and Amy's coming up now, and she could tell us all about that. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, and I appreciate your time this evening. I am Amy McLaughlin. I am here with Child Care Connection. We are one of the participating organizations in Summit County's First Things First Project, which is an initiative supported by County Executive Russ Pry, and it, that initiative supports families and children, or families who have children birthed through age five. So, that First Things First has initiative, has set aside August as Summit for Kids Month, recognizing that supports and are very necessary to, for the Summit County community, for young children. So, the month kicks off with an event, a symposium, and it's the Fifth Annual Symposium for Professionals in the Community at the John S. Knight Center on August 1st, culminating the next day with a family event on August 2nd. It's a very busy event that day for families and children. Children receive lots of gifts, including backpacks and notebooks and things like that to be able to start school. It's a very well-attended event with many tons of, we've had over a 10,000 family participation in years past. And then, we have designated each week of the month with different focuses. The first week of the month will be focused on early care and education and kindergarten readiness, and there will be two events coming up that month, or that week, around kindergarten readiness and supporting families with information around what it means to be ready to start school. The second week is around wellness. The third week is going to be focusing on resources for family, and one of the resources that the county's developed is an Early Childhood Resource Book, which we brought some today to make sure that families in Twinsburg were able to receive that. And the fourth and last week is that week when children are beginning to start back to school, and we're embracing Safe Routes to School program with Akron Children's Safe Kids Program, and making sure we're encouraging safe practices for children. So, we do appreciate your time and letting us tell you a little bit about what it means to embrace the children, young children, in here in Summit County, and the month that we have planned for families, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Amy. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we will move on to audience participation. Shannon?
There is none.
There is none, okay. We will move on to council communication committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Yes, the Planning Commission met on June 16th. Primary focus of that meeting was cornerstone business, the FedEx Distribution Center. There was a presentation done, there was a lot of dialogue between Planning Commission members, myself, the mayor, and the representative with the proposed site plan. So, they're working through Planning Commission at this time, and I'm sure they're going to be back in front of Planning Commission with, as they start fine-tuning that design for that particular project, but that's an exciting time for both the old Chrysler property as well as the city of Twinsburg. There's a Planning Commission meeting coming up on June 30th. It'll be a pretty heavy agenda, there are, and then the Planning Commission will be on break, so the next meeting will not be until August, so just watch the website for those announcements. Tonight, I attended a bike group community planning meeting that we had up at the center behind the pool, and these are basically residents from the city of Twinsburg that are actively promoting bike paths, both on roadways as well as bike paths that are part of our trail system. And there was some good discussion. We actually had a resident from the township also there, too, but there was a lot of discussion. Amy was there, also talking about the different projects we have going on and possibilities of different things we can do in the community. Couple of the main topics was putting in signs, and a couple of the communities looking at, in the Gettysburg community, just notifying people of routes that are now coming off of Laurel Trail, and then, as we move through the development of Corbett's Farm, having some signage in there that will direct people from Metalwood and Ethan's Green down to Center Valley Parkway, and then hopefully have, will have some connectivity to downtown. Another topic was kind of separating both road cyclists as well as family biking and the pursuit of potentially eight-foot asphalt paths instead of sidewalks that may connect, say, from the Gettysburg development all the way to the downtown area, which will allow residents to safely travel to get to downtown, as well as looking at, as we work on the redevelopment of the southeast corner of the square downtown, looking at different bike paths that then connect up to residential areas off of Liberty Road. So, it's a good meeting. I'm sure that we're going to continue to have dialogue regarding, you know, how we can continue to encourage biking in Twinsburg, as well as, from a trail standpoint, start connecting all our residential areas to the downtown area. And then lastly, I just want to say, I attended the Taste of Twinsburg, which was a phenomenal event. I was really impressed with the organization, the amount of support we got from vendors, the restaurants that participated. It, for a first-year event, it seemed like an event that had been going on for 15 years, that how much the residents supported, as well as our community businesses, so I just, you know, for all those that helped put that together, I think that's going to be, you know, a notable event here in the city of Twinsburg, and just, you know, it was, I really enjoyed it, my family enjoyed it, so, that's all I would say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yates. Mr. Roden?
Yes, none of my committees have met, but just an environmental commission update. On Saturday, June 14th, the Kennesaw University Academic Center in Twinsburg had the free shredding, and it was a great turnout. The total of 4,050 pounds of paper were shredded. It started at 8:30 a.m. and it ended at 12:15, so that's, that's pretty impressive. Also, the environmental commission was there, as well at the, as well as myself, we were there at the Taste of Twinsburg. The environmental commission was there, and they were monitoring waste stations and informing people about importance of recycling, so it was great that they were there to do that, and kind of to piggyback off what Mr. Yates said, it was a great event, and Jen did a great job overseeing the whole thing, so, that is it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roden. Under my report, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, met on June 11th, and then again on June 18th, and they had one, one case at each, one hearing at each meeting. We had Appeal Number 12, 2014, which was a request to allow for a non-conforming setback to be increased by an additional nine feet at the south elevation of the dwelling. Then we also had Appeal Number 13 at the June 18th meeting, which was for, a request for an elimination of a 1 and 5/8 inch spacing on a fence requirement. The board heard both appeals, and at those two respective meetings, they voted to allow those variances. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we waive the 30-day waiting period on both Appeal Number 12 and Appeal Number 13, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. McDermott? Anybody have any questions? Okay, Shannon?
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The other thing, and I don't want to be repetitive, but I think it's worth repeating, I, too, attended the First Annual Taste of Twinsburg event on Saturday, and it was a tremendous success. And there's a few thank yous I want to throw out there. One was Jen Carlton from Fox 8 News, she's a morning producer there. It was really her idea to do this event, and she worked tirelessly for over a year putting this thing together. She had an amazing group to work with, she had amazing volunteer committee to work with. It was just, and, you know, the residents came out, I want to thank the sponsors, all the sponsors that were there, restaurant sponsors, all the VIP tent sponsors, and one other person I think that we should thank, as well as Joanne McFerrin. She is our hometown realtor here, and Joanne was our main sponsor of the event, and it was through Joanne's contributions that really helped this thing happen as well. So, thank you, Joanne, for your support and for all your help at the First Annual Taste of Twinsburg. I'm looking forward to doing it again next year. Again, we've had, we had people from everywhere, not only from Twinsburg, but the people I spoke with were from out of town, and some not even around, close to the city. So, it did draw a nice crowd, and I think that, actually, I spoke to some of the vendors, and they were even surprised, and one vendor went out on a limb to tell me that, how proud he was of the city that his business is in because it was so well-run and so successful that he really appreciated it, and he can't wait to be back next year as well. So, my hat's off to everybody that had anything to do with the Taste of Twinsburg. It was a great event. Other than that, that is the end. Oh, I do, we do have another, another BZA meeting will be July 2nd, so that's not next Wednesday, but the Wednesday after, at 6:30 here at City Hall. That's the end of my report. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The redistricting committee has approved the map that was created by the changes that they had recommended, and we will be scheduling a meeting to have the law director meet with them to iron out the language for our legislation to adopt these changes, as we are required to do every five years by the charter, to maintain a balance between our five wards. There'll be, we're still working on a date for a golf course advisory meeting in July to get caught up on some of the changes that are going on, as well as the revenues that are coming in, and I also attended the Taste of Twinsburg this weekend, and I think we've said enough, so I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Fury.
You guys are really good. I mean, I don't know if I could add to that, so...
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
I have no report this evening.
Anybody have anything? Mr. Maestros, mayor leaving any report?
No.
Okay, no mayor's report. Department head reports? Derek Schroeder. I guess we're starting with Derek tonight.
Blast.
I got an emergency message here that says Derek goes first.
Oh, even better.
It came hot off the wire, so I got to let you go first.
Awesome. So, I want to say something about going on at the fitness center. We're rolling out a new key card system here over the next few weeks, where you'll be scanning your key fob to get into the fitness center, or to the senior center, or to the water park next year, and obviously not this year. And you can also take a picture of it on your smartphone and just scan your phone, so you don't have to actually carry your key fob with you if you want to do that. We're just getting to the point that we have six-digit numbers people are needing to memorize, and six-digit numbers, and, you know, three kids, and they might be out of order, and you can't remember them, so it's, it's getting to be an issue that we're going to have to go to cards, but they're just generic cards, and you just scan them in real quick. So those will be rolling out here over the next few weeks. Some people have gotten them already, but most people will get them over the next couple of weeks. And then, new equipment's at the fitness center, there's, I think, three new pieces of cardio equipment, there's the new rope pull thing, that's pretty cool. I've never seen one of those at actually a gym before, so I thought it was pretty cool. And spinning bikes should be here in the next week or two, completing the fitness center equipment. Other stuff going, coming into the facility at the senior center, we have a new awning that went over one of our patios, we have new patio furniture up there, and we have automatic doors that were installed at the restroom, so that was on the capital list this year, so those have all been completed for the senior center, and they have a lot of stuff going on this time of year with trips and events, and their senior picnic is coming up on August 22nd, which I know a lot of you attend as well, so if you want to mark, it's August 22nd for that date. There's only a few more sessions of Safety Town, which is hard to believe, we're already at the end of June, and Day Camp, we're halfway through with strong numbers for Day Camp this year, which is, which is great. Strong numbers as well with the water park, and right now Township of Reminderville are making up about 10% of water park memberships, which is about where we thought they would fall out. And Rock the Park first show was successful, Country Night this week, and then we have the most tickets already sold for the Orchestra on July 11th, All Ages Show. I would recommend people getting tickets for that in advance. That show almost sold out last year, and I'm assuming it will actually sell out this year before the night of the show, and...
Derek, did you say children are allowed at that one as well?
Yeah, that's, that's All Ages Show, yep.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why it will sell out, and it's a fireworks night, July 11th. And we have a, the gentleman who does our magic and juggling camp is going to put it on an illusion show before they go on. He starts at 7:00, orchestra starts about 8:00, fireworks 9:45-ish. And the ballet event that we've had in the summer before night moves, we've actually moved to the September to be inside the high school auditorium, September 26th, and we just were approved for funding from Medical Mutual in the amount of $7,500 for that show. So when we combine that with some other sponsorships coming through, I think we'll have that fully funded by the time that comes. And last thing, I want to let you know, the farmer's market's going on Thursdays from 3:30 to 6:00 over at Gander Mountain. We've had successful last few Thursdays, we've had vendors selling out, all the vendors seem very happy. It seems that the community's starting to pick on that that's where to go. I know it was kind of going back and forth between the square, so I think it's going to be our place to stay. We were kind of giving it this year to see how it was going, and so far, things are going really well over there, and it's, I think last year we had rain on every Thursday, and this year we've had nice weather on every Thursday, so that helps, too. So, it's, you know, it's summer as usual in Parks and Rec.
Pool looks great. We've...
Yeah, the, the Sam Scafidi Fountain is fantastic.
Those new slide look, I mean, you didn't, not new slide, but you painted it, it looks great, and everything, it really has a new look to it, so they've done a nice job.
Yeah, it's definitely new feel.
Very nice.
The pool actually looks brand-new almost.
Yeah.
So, yeah, all, the delay of the water feature gave us time to paint the pool, which we normally weren't going to.
Right.
And we'll be talking, looking at maybe replacing the pool from paint to an actual, like, it's like a poured vinyl in the future that lasts like 15, 20 years, doesn't fade, we don't have to paint it every few years and sandblast it, so that'll be coming, probably in our capital request for, for, for next year. But, yeah, it does look good, thank you for noticing.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Who wants to go next? Karen, you want to go next?
Perfect segue to next year. Can you believe it or not, that I have communicated with our department heads to let them know that it's time to prepare 2015 budget. They will be receiving their packages on or before Friday. I will be soliciting finance committee to figure out dates to meet, to prepare for the budget review. I've set up dates for the mayor to review the budget. Last year, we had budget reviews, and budgets were due in September, and the reason why it was a month later was because we were going through a conversion. This year, that's not the case, so we're going back to the normal month that we usually, that I usually request for it to be submitted, and that is in the month of August. In fact, August 4th, it's due, and the schedule to meet with the mayor is August 13th, Thursday, 14th, and 15th, if needed, and then we'll move to the finance committee, and I'll schedule meeting times or suggestions and recommendations on that. I'm also requesting that they do prepare the five-year capital, as usual, and that will be along with the budget submission. We have, we did have a training session, our second, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, it was a great success, we have many to attend, and they did get quite a bit feedback from the usage that they've been using from January to June, and additional training with the new VIP system. And then, we're still trying to learn as far as what more capabilities, as far as financial reporting, that this new system does, but I will say, I don't know what your feedback has been since you've received the financial statements, as far as how it is read, how you, how the numbers and how it's presented to you. I think it's a big difference as far as how the font looks and how it's presented. Hopefully, you like the way it looks, so... Also, I wanted to make a note, as far as we did receive our June collections, and for the month of June, we received $1,276,040 compared to last year, $1,564,765. This does reflect a decrease of 18.5, .45 percent, or $288,724.62. For the year, the refunds and adjustments is $208,744, which is reflective in the June collection. Total year-to-date receipts collected for 2014 is $13,463,840 compared to last year, This reflects a decrease of 18% thus far for the year, which is $1,169 million less compared to last year. The net distribution applied due to the quarter percent being rescinded is $173,353. Also, I would like to make a note that I did attend the Regional Income Tax Agency CAG meeting, and I'm excited to be appointed, or I should say elected, to the Regional Income Tax Board effective July 1, 2014, and it goes to 2015 of June, so, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen, and I apologize, that was written down to congratulate you on my report, and I slipped right by it, so I, so I'm sorry for that, but congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a great honor, thanks. Larry, you have anything? Colette, Larry?
Thank you. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Just a quick summary of what's going on in community development and planning. Meetings this week, we'll be meeting with an architect selection committee for the Clubhouse Architect Selection, and we've received requests for qualifications, and we are going to be shortlisting for architect interviews that will occur on Wednesday at 11 o'clock. On Thursday this week, there's a switching gears, alternative transportation seminar at AMATS, actually, it's going to be at the library in Akron, but AMATS is sponsoring that. Basically, that's a bike, biking, and alternate transportation, planning kind of informational meeting that'll go pretty much all day on Thursday, Derek, both Derek and I will be attending that. Projects in front of Planning Commission include a Safran parking lot expansion at Safran on Darrell Road, cornerstone subdivision approval, cornerstone FedEx site plan, Westside Falls subdivision to split off a piece of ground for a memory care center, and then the Westside Falls Memory Care Center site plan. We have received requests for tax abatement from FedEx and Skanel Properties for the FedEx project going, proposed for Cornerstone. Will be presenting that legislation to council at the, at the next meeting on July the 8th. Tonight, legislation that's before council from the Community Development Department includes continuation of the enterprise zone agreements for three entities, including Hitachi Medical, Kia USA, and GED Integrated Solutions. Also, Ordinance 71, 2014, which requests the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan by the council, as recommended by the city's Planning Commission, in a, in their motion of April 8th, which read basically, recommending to city council the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan dated February 27th, 2014, including applying recommendation and policies therein, including the potential demolition of the former Twinsburg Old School and redevelopment of its site. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, Larry, thank you.
Thank you.
Colette, anything? Nothing tonight? Okay. That ends the department head reports. Next, we'll move into legislation. We have Resolution 53, all the way, 53, 2014, all the way through 61, 2014. Those are all the charter amendments that the Charter Review Commission recommended council that we put on the ballot. We've read them at the last two meetings, so they have had their two readings. Tonight, we're going to pass those over, then we will read them on their third and final reading in two weeks at the next council meeting for passage, when the rest of council is here. So we will not be reading those tonight, but they have had their two readings already. Next, we'll move on to Ordinance 65, 2014. Please.
An ordinance adopting the tax budget of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio, the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015, and submitting the same to the county auditor.
Thank you. That was its second reading. We have Ordinance 66, 2014.
An ordinance approving the recodification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Twinsburg, Ohio.
That was also its second reading. Ordinance 71, 2014.
An ordinance adopting the document known as the Comprehensive Plan for the municipality of Twinsburg.
That is on its first reading tonight. We have Ordinance 72, 2014.
An ordinance approving a change order to the contract with URS for modifications of additional work related to Liberty Sidewalk Project and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 72, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, second. Is there any discussion?
The reason for the emergency is that we have an active project, we need to move forward while we're, while the weather's good. This is a minor change, it's something that we've already reviewed, and I'm, I believe that we should do this in an emergency, so it can take action as early as tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt Ordinance 72, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Fury, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll yield.
And Mr. Yates, second. Is there any discussion on the adoption? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Ordinance 72, 2014 passes as an emergency. Next, we have Resolution 73, 2014.
A resolution accepting the recommendation...
A resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax and Incentive Review Council regarding the numerous enterprise zone agreements with the city of Twinsburg and the county of Summit.
Okay, I need a motion for adoption of resolution 73, 2014. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Roden, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, is there any discussion?
This is a, we are extending three agreements that have been recommended by the, the city, the county, and the school system. They include KIA USA, Hitachi Medical, and GED Integrated Solutions, and this is an abatement for infrastructure that they added to their buildings.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Okay. Resolution 73, 2014 passes 5-0. Ordinance 74, 2014.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the special revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 74, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, second? Okay. Any discussion on the emergency?
The reason for the emergency is we need to transfer some money so that we're able to accept a bid in the next few weeks regarding an irrigation system.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the rolls.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion for, to adopt ordinance 74, 2014 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Fury, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden? Any discussion on the adoption? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion for, to adopt ordinance 74, 2014 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Fury, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden? Any discussion on the adoption? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci? Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 75, 2014 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Yates, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion on the adoption? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Okay, now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 75, 2014 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Yates, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion on the adoption? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Okay. Ordinance 75, 2014 passes as an emergency, 5-0. We have resolution 76, 2014.
A resolution appointing four team members to the environmental commission and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so, we interviewed four students and we felt that all four...
Why don't we get a, a motion in a second?
Oh, we had to do that first? I thought we were...
I think...
Yeah, you need to do action. I thought you were gonna do the names.
And then, yeah, and then you can put the names.
It's under amendment.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, I need a, I wanna make a motion to adopt resolution 76, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden? Okay, now discussion?
Okay, so we interviewed four students. We felt all four were extremely exceptional, actually. Three of them we met, one I interviewed myself over the phone. He's not in here, you know, in town. He's actually, I think, in Africa.
It's on a mission trip, I think.
Yeah. So, very, very impressed with all, all four of them and after discussing, we felt that we should put all four in there in opposed to trying to figure out which two we would put. So, we are putting Hallie Shaw, Rohini Vembare, Simi Gill, and Connor Rubin.
Go ahead. We're good? Okay.
Okay. And Hallie, Rohini, and Connor will have a one-year term and Simi Gill will have a two because she is a junior.
Okay.
So, we're gonna add those names and we're gonna amend this to read that those first three terms end from 6:30, 14 to 6:29, 15, and that the, that the fourth term with Simi goes to...
Correct.
Would remain at 16.
Okay. Okay. Is that, we need to vote on that?
Yes.
As an amendment?
Yes.
All right, so that's the motion?
Yes.
Is that Seth's motion? Is that your motion?
Is that my motion? I'll second Seth's motion.
And Mr. Fury's second Seth, Mr. Roden's motion. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Real quick, just to clarify, are we voting on the motion to amend it or are we voting on the motion to pass it?
The motion to amend.
To amend it first?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause we have, you guys had the motion out there already existing.
This is the amendment to that motion.
But, I know, but you guys had, what I'm saying is you had the, you made, Mr. Scafidi made the motion, Mr. Roden seconded it, and then he talked in discussion about his motion, which you guys just called and seconded.
And I seconded Mr. Roden's motion.
Right, but don't you have to vote on the motion?
No.
That's already existing first?
You put it out in action.
Just questioning.
You get a second for the motion, for, for the resolution and we're discussing it. We made an amendment.
Mending it.
We're changing the amending, so we're gonna adopt it as amended.
Okay.
But you have to, you have to second it first so that you can make changes to it or vote on it or take action on it.
So, right now is on the amendment.
And then, we're gonna go back to adopting it as amended.
As amended.
Okay, on the amendment.
So, this is on the amendment.
All right. On the amendment, Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
All right. On the amendment, Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer? Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 76, 2014 passes 5-0. Thank you, Shannon, for clarifying that before we all voted on it, so, you know, we're, then we're all on the same page. Finally, we have ordinance 77, 2014.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a sanitary sewer agreement with Summit County to include the Reminderville service area and declaring an emergency.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have ordnance, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 77, 2014, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Yates, any discussion on the emergency?
The reason for the emergency is that this has been negotiated for over three years and we need to get this done in time for the Summit County Council to also vote on